I think in the beginning, a little bit.
A little bit of noise, okay.
But we have the mic here is maybe better.
Yes.
以及也是伦敦科技周的联合创始人Russ肖来进行特别的对话。Russ maybe say hello first.
Hi everyone, it's great to be here.
以及伦敦科技倡导小组的一个创始人。Uh, sir Russ, yes, I think the first thing, I just want to ask your question. What's the first image when you join today's activity, the Pujang Innovation Forum and the Inner Match? Because you are the founder of the Tech London Week.
Yes.
You join a lot of activities of London Tech Week.
Yes.
Then this is your first time to join with Pujang Innovation Forum?
Yes.
What's the first image of that?
I think the first image of Pujang Innovation Forum is the size and the scale and the impact of what's going on in technology. Being here in the exhibition space is really impressive, lots of great innovation here. I joined the opening ceremony yesterday and heard some terrific speeches from leaders here in Shanghai. And so the size and scale is very impactful, but the quality of what I'm experiencing in terms of the breadth of technology is really impressive. It's different to London Tech Week, but there are similarities, and I know you came to London Tech Week this year. And so my first impression is a very good one.
And do you have to share some of the difference between the London Tech Week and the Inner Match Expo?
Yes, I think the Inner Match Expo, it's big, there's a huge space, um, there's a lot of energy here. For London Tech Week, we have a similar exhibition space in a much older building, um, left over from the Victorian times. But what also happens during London Tech Week are there are a lot of smaller events that take place all around London, and we call it the London Tech Week Fringe. So you can go to the big impactful events, but if you want to go deeper into some of the specific areas of tech, you do that through the fringe events in London Tech Week, so that's one of the differences.
Yes, yes, it's because I joined this year's London Tech Week.
You did.
I found in the Inner Match Expo, we have a lot of the research outcomes exhibition. You can see a lot of the products, a lot of the new technology in different ways to showing the people. But in London Tech Week, uh, I think the efficiency is the communication, the people by people.
Yes.
We saw a lot of the coffee, a lot of the tea, we talk about the communication.
Yes.
And talk about the technology research.
Yes.
And what's the common sense about the two big events?
Well, I think what you've just described with London Tech Week, I talk about it as a global tech event that happens to take place in London. So there's not as much product showcase, but there's much more connections, networking, communications. And people will come over for London Tech Week and not even come to the exhibition, but they're coming to London Tech Week because they know that other leaders will be there at London Tech Week. And I think what I'm seeing here, and I hope this continues, is that we're seeing a global tech event happen in Shanghai.
Yes.
And I hope that the globalness of what you have here continues to grow and expand. And I think that's what Inner Match and London Tech Week have in common, is that they're global events that happen to take place in Shanghai or in London. And I think that is symbolic of Shanghai being a world-leading technology hub and London being a world-leading technology hub. That's what we have in common, although the way we approach it may be different.
Yes, you, uh, they're both city, London and also the Shanghai is a global innovation center, but with a different characteristics.
Yes.
Yeah, and you just mentioned they are the both, uh, the important city of the innovation and the Inner Match Expo and also Tech London Week is also the big events. What's your suggestions about how to make the connections the more between the two big events?
I think, and you certainly did this when you came to London Tech Week, you brought a delegation of leaders with you to experience London Tech Week, see for yourself, meet people and connect. And I think we at London Tech Week and Tech London Advocates should do more to bring people here to Shanghai. Now, I have certainly done that with Global Tech Advocates. So we did our very first Global Tech Advocates Summit here in Shanghai in 2019. We brought forty to fifty people from London, but from around the world, and we're planning to do that again next year. We brought London Tech Week to Shanghai in 2018.
Yes, that's right.
Which was, which was, which was spectacular. We had five or six hundred people.
Yes.
Come to London Tech Week in Shanghai. So to me, the events are key, the exchange of people are key. And in terms of what I do with Global Tech Advocates, the community that we're building around our ecosystems is really key. So we have Tech China Advocates.
Yes.
Started in Shanghai, we've got groups in Shenzhen, Wuxi, Chengdu, Hong Kong, and now Suzhou. And we've got all of our other groups around the world. We've got six groups in the UK as well. Bringing them together on the back of all of these events is important. And what I'm doing is I am writing up my experience here, which I will publish to the forty thousand global tech advocates, so that they know if they can't be here, they understand my impression of what I'm seeing in Shanghai as a world-leading technology hub.
Okay, you already mentioned the Global Tech Advocates.
Yes.
I know you are the founder of this nonprofit organization.
Yes.
Could you please share why will you create this such a big network and what's the purpose or the mission for that?
No, it's a great question. Um, like all things I do, it started small. It started with about a hundred people in London eleven years ago. And that one hundred people in Tech London Advocates has now grown to eighteen thousand. And our focus is very simple. We want to promote startups and scale-ups, starting in London as a tech hub. What can we do to help them, to connect them to investors? How do we help university spin-outs? How do we talk to the big tech companies and say, this is what's going on in the tech ecosystem? I never expected that this initiative would go global. And so I started to expand it globally in 2015, which is when I created Global Tech Advocates. So beyond London, what I do.
Yes.
Is I license the brand, the IP, and the operating principles for how to build these communities to groups and organizations around the world. So Semti Group has the license for all of the groups that we launch in Tech China Advocates. But they create a similar model. They host and organize events, and they interconnect with all of our other groups around the world. Now, I charge one pound or ten RMB per year.
Okay.
For the license. So it's not about making money.
It's really nonprofit.
It's really nonprofit, but I do, I charge ten RMB because it's also to indicate that this is, we want this to act like a commercial operation. So if advocates are meeting other advocates for commercial benefit, that's fantastic. But everybody in the community is a volunteer, and I just ask people, just if everybody just gives a little bit extra beyond their day job, we can create something big, and we have. So we now have forty GTA groups.
Okay.
Around the world, across four zero.
Okay.
Across all six continents. And a lot of what we do now is we interconnect all of our groups. So for example, last October, our Tech UAE Advocates Group in Dubai.
Yes.
Invited Tech China Advocates, Tech India Advocates, Tech UK Advocates to come to Dubai and bring investors so that they could see what was happening in that part of the world. And we do that all of the time now. So what I'd like to do is link Shanghai and Tech China Advocates and the work that you're doing into our global platform, because we can reach a lot of people and put the spotlight on the great things that you're doing here.
So that means the network and the connection is a priority for this network. But I have another question. You know, this is a cross-border. Cross-border means cross-culture.
Yes.
Especially nowadays, I think a lot of projects through your network to have the connections, like the new technology.
Yes.
The new investment and the spin-off and maybe the co-research.
Yes.
What's the big challenges when the different cultures work together to make the, we call the technology transfer happy?
Yes, I think what we tend to focus on is that we have a lot more in common with each other than we sometimes think. The way ecosystems work, and I know here in Shanghai, it is different. You have a lot of direct government engagement here with activities and events, whereas in the UK, there's not so much. It's much more driven by the private sector. However, we're all using or trying to create similar technologies, whether it's around robotics or quantum or blockchain or artificial intelligence. And my philosophy that I drive through our global community is we need to engage with each other. We need to be mindful that cultures are different. Geopolitical experiences are different from one country to another. But we also have a lot in common in terms of supporting entrepreneurs, supporting technology transfer, getting investors to invest in the latest technology. That's really important for all of us. And cross-border, that comes back to a platform that we launched called Launchpad. We're trying to help businesses scale wherever they are in the world. And so the way you do that, and our Tech China Advocates are very good at this, is I send to them entrepreneurs who are looking at expanding to Shanghai. They will meet with them and they will say, here's what you need to know if you're coming to Shanghai. Here are the organizations, here are the people, here are the events. But we do that on a global scale and we leverage the different activities that we have. To give you another example, our Tech India Advocates and our Tech Brazil Advocates Group are working on a joint event focused on agritech.
Okay.
Because agritech is a technology area that is critical for both India and Brazil. And so what I would love to do with our Tech China Advocates Group is how do we look at other areas and say, who do you want to work with? Do you want to work with our UK groups or our Nordics group? And how do we drive greater collaboration? And if that includes technology transfer, that's great. Let's showcase where we think technology transfer is working really well. I think it works well in the UK. It works well in the USA. It's not working so well in Brazil because their culture is very different about the value of technology transfer. I don't, I don't agree with it, but it's the way they operate. So we have to come at this with an open mind to understand and respect cultural differences, but know that we want to engage with each other. I, my last point on this is, in one particular area, I think we all have to work together. And that's around climate tech and sustainability.
Yeah.
Why? Because we share one planet.
Yes.
And we have to work together. And I, being here in Shanghai, watching the growth of electric vehicles is incredible. I mean, just being here and seeing how many electric vehicles you have is so reassuring because, you know, you've got such a big economy, but if everybody's using electric vehicles, that's saying to me, well, we're not emitting carbon.
Okay.
And how do we take that learning and share that? How do you share that with the rest of the world?
Yeah, but maybe the next question is a really precious question.
Okay.
Yes, you talk about the communication between the different country, different institutions. I know the green tech, green tech reduction, the carbon reduction, it's a, could be concepted by all the institution and countries. But in some areas, like the AI.
Yes.
Like the quantum computing.
Yes.
Maybe there's a lot of Chinese between the different sectors.
There are.
How do you see that? How do you deal with that?
Carefully.
Okay, yes, it's a precious question.
It is, it is, it's a tricky one because, you know, I have to be mindful that we operate in different geopolitical environments, whether it's AI or semiconductors.
Yes.
We're about to launch a Global Tech Advocates Semiconductor Working Group. But I would like to have Shanghai and China represented in that group, although I am mindful that there are geopolitical issues around it, quantum. You know, China is investing an enormous amount. I've heard a statistic that China invests more in quantum than all other nations combined. So what does that say to me? One, quantum is strategically important.
Yes.
Two, quantum is going to move quickly here. But I'm also mindful that there are sensitivities in certain countries around the world about that. But my view is I'd rather engage directly, meet people and know where can we cooperate and where do we have to say, let's know what each other's doing, but maybe that's as far as we can go.
Okay.
But maybe I can introduce China entrepreneurs to other parts of the world where maybe there's less sensitivities. That's part of what we did in Dubai.
Yeah.
You know, Dubai is really making a global play to be a world-leading technology hub. They don't have some of the restrictions.
Yes.
That Western countries or the USA would be imposing. So John and the team from Tech China Advocates came to Dubai last October, and they are following up on that. So I can't change the world of politics, nor can you, but I think we have to be respectful of what's going on. But my view is, let's always have a dialogue. And sometimes people in different parts of the world have challenged me and said, why do you go to China every year? And I say, why shouldn't I be going to China every year? This is a world leader.
Good feedback, yes.
It's a world leader in innovation, being here and seeing, I love the AI for life that you introduced me to yesterday. Wow, it's AI, but the benefit of what's being done there, I think can benefit many nations. So I'm going to introduce your colleague to our other groups because I think they would be really interested in it. So we have to navigate carefully, but if we don't understand what's happening here, and if you don't understand what's happening in the UK or Germany.
Know each other is the first thing, yeah.
Exactly, we have to do that, but we're also smart enough to say, we know we can work together here, but maybe not so much here, but maybe these are the different groups in GTA that you can work with. That's my philosophy.
You, you gave me good suggesting about the young entrepreneurs. I think don't mind the crisis because some things we cannot change. But you have a, should be impressed all over the world to let them know what you do.
Yes.
And to know what the other do to make the, find the common sense. You talk about the AI.
Yes.
AI is a, it's an important industry in Shanghai. We, we call Shanghai well, construct the AI industry. Now also London, this London Tech Week, the topic is also about the AI.
Yes.
Could you, could you please share some the experience? How the government of the UK or the government of the London to promote the AI industry?
Yes, it's a good question, and it, I think the, the growth in AI in London has evolved in a very different way. To give you an example, if I can, just the history. London ten years ago, there was not much in AI. But then a big tech company, Google.
Yeah.
Acquired a very promising British company called DeepMind. And Google then moved a lot of their AI leaders from Silicon Valley to London. And then when that happened, a lot of AI companies started to be created in London. But driven much more from the private sector rather than from the government. That's one of the differences that we have. So investors, private sector investors were getting behind it. But the growth has been so dramatic that some other big tech companies have announced that they are putting their global AI hubs in London, so OpenAI.
Okay.
Microsoft.
Yes.
Salesforce have all said that London is going to be their headquarters, their global headquarters for AI. What that does is it attracts a lot of entrepreneurs.
Why did you choose London as their global headquarters of this big AI company?
Yes, well, they, they have said outside of their home market, London is their global headquarters. And so that reinforces for us the significance and importance of London as a global tech hub. Now, the government has been helpful, but they didn't drive that. It was driven by the private sector. So when I go to different hubs around the world, when I go to France, for example, I think there's a lot of innovation in France. But the French government has put a lot of money behind it.
Okay.
When I look at the British government, they haven't put as much. They have made investments. So these hubs have evolved in very different ways. And part of why I think London will be strong is that sometimes when governments change in Western democracies, one government may say, we want to invest in AI, and the new government comes in and says, no, we're not going to do that.
Okay.
And we're actually seeing some of that with our new government in, in the UK. What are their priorities around tech? Well, it's a bit different from the previous government. However, the fundamental strength of London as an AI hub is not going away.
Okay.
So that's just some of the context around how London has emerged as an AI hub.
You give me a key word, that means the market-oriented or the market-driven.
Yes.
The, the private sector through the investment or something to put the AI industry development in London.
Yes.
And, and, but, but we know the SMEs, especially the AI, in the early stage, we have a, we have a two questions, master fees. The one is the, is evaluating, the, the prices is high.
Yes.
The second, the risk is high.
High, yes.
How to the investors in London to deal with these two questions?
I think in terms of the risk question, and I, I'm an investor myself, and I've invested.
You have the experience, so why, why, why I ask you this question?
So when you talk to investors, when they create a fund to invest in AI, they may, for example, make ten investments from that fund. But the metrics behind it is that they assume that only one of the ten will be successful.
Yes.
The other nine will fail, but they have built the fund without understanding. If all ten fail, then the fund loses money, and that's a problem. But most investors understand that the risk around this is that as long as they get one winner, they're okay. I, twenty years ago, I ran a later-stage startup, and my investors also invested in other companies. And I believe my company and the other, one other company were successful. That drove a fantastic return to the investors, and it was so successful, they then created the next fund. So there is risk behind it, but a lot of investors look at it with the assumption that when they invest, many companies will fail. But the other thing that they do is they work with the founders and the entrepreneurs of those failing companies, and they say, you failed here, but we want you to do something again because you will have learned from the experience that will make you a better entrepreneur. So sometimes failed entrepreneurs.
You need to have the patience, right?
Yeah, you have to have patience. You have to have a longer-term time horizon, but it's part of the dynamics. And we know some of the AI companies in London will not survive, but that's okay.
Yes, you, you mentioned, yes, you, you should know the experience through the investment and then go to the investor, the successful one. I, I have a question, details about the technology.
Okay.
Like the AI technology. Do you, all, all they will have to ask for the support by the universities to maybe give the technology evaluation of, do you know the meaning?
Do, do universities do give technology?
I just want to know the, first, the role of the university in, in the whole process.
Yes.
The second, in China nowadays, if we to do the investment.
Yes.
In the new tech company.
Yes.
They also will have the technology evaluation.
Yes.
How to evaluate for that?
Yes, that's what, I guess, again, differences in the ecosystem. So the universities, we call them spin-outs. And universities will help support startups and incubate them. But the way they work the economics is that they will get a return on the investment if the startup is successful.
Yeah.
And that could range anywhere from five percent to twenty percent. So if the company does well, the university gets a payback from that valuation when it goes commercial. In terms of how you value the technology, again, it comes back to the private sector and the investors. They are the key drivers behind how they value the technology companies. I would say it's more of an art than a science.
Okay.
But it is based upon looking at other companies that have been acquired or have done an IPO to say, we think this company can do this, and we've seen other companies at this valuation, so we're going to value it at this amount. When I ran the startup, I came in after what was called the Series C round. You have Series A, Series B, Series C, and for each round, the valuation gets adjusted. The Series C round, when I came in, was a lower valuation. That put a lot of pressure on the company and the founders because they could see previously they would have earned more, and that valuation went down. When I came in, I worked with the team, we made the company profitable, we expanded the revenues, we entered more markets, including China at the time. When I did the Series D round, the investors said, we like what you're doing. We can see the financial metrics going up. We're going to increase your valuation.
Yes.
And so after that Series D round, the company was eventually acquired by another company who brought the valuation at an even higher level. It is a subjective way to determine the valuation of the company, but it's done by the private markets. And then it interf. And then it interfaces with the public market when you do the IPO.
Okay.
So that's kind of how it works.
Yes, could I conclude for that is use the investment logic to say the technology, to say the new technology?
Yes.
If they are, they are not the mutual one, you maybe just a lower price.
Yes.
And you have the patience to make the technologies development.
Yes.
And then to expansion.
Yes.
Okay, we, we talk about the technology transfer. I have another question about the London Tech Week.
Okay.
Because I joined the London Tech Week. A lot of the global people, a lot of the country joint, went in London.
Yes.
To communicate in London. And how do you make that happy? Because in Shanghai, Shanghai is also a very international.
It is.
City or center. The government also want to ask for or invite the different countries could come to Shanghai.
Yes.
Maybe find the opportunities for the collaboration.
Yes.
Or, or the talent to come to Shanghai.
Yes.
Or the investment in Shanghai. Do you have some suggestions about? Because I think London is a really international.
Yes.
How to make that happen?
Yeah, it's a very good question. There is a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. Global tech advocates, when I travel the world.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm always promoting Come to London Tech Week. But it's not just me, it's the UK Department for Business and Trade, it's London and Partners, it's other organizations in the London ecosystem that are constantly traveling the world and saying, come to London Tech Week. And that has worked well. And then when the international delegations come, they have a good experience, they go back and they tell others, you should go to London Tech Week. So for Shanghai, my offer to you is how can I be an ambassador to encourage others to come to Shanghai? Now that I've been to Inomach and Pujang Innovation Forum, how do you want to use me and Tech China Advocates to say, come here next year? This is an important event. And some of the people who are here from outside of China, how do you use them to give testimonials to say, you really should go to this event? And step by step, step by step, that will change. When we did the very first London Tech Week, it was not very international.
Okay.
So over 11 years, we've really focused on that. It also leverages, and this is where Shanghai and London have a lot in common. We're both very international cities. And so we go to our networks in London, the financial services sector, the technology sector, to the universities to say, we've got this great week of activities. When you're doing events where you're inviting colleagues from the world, have them come during London Tech Week. So we try and synergize with a lot of organizations to bring everybody together during London Tech Week. We've already announced the dates for next year and we've gone to people to say, make sure you have that in your calendar.
Yeah, that's, that's why the last time you, you meet the governor of Shanghai, you, you suggest Shanghai should find the different ambassador of the innovation city.
Yes.
And they will go abroad to join the other countries' innovation activity to introduce Shanghai and invite them come to Shanghai.
Yes, it's, it's so important. And, and when we did our Global Tech Advocates Summit here in Shanghai in 2019, we had 40 or 45 people who, after a few days, they loved what they saw. And that was five years ago, it was before the pandemic. What did they do? They went back to their home countries and they talked about their positive experience in Shanghai. So when we do our next GTA summit, I know that we'll be able to bring more people because there are others who've been here who can say, I had a fantastic experience. You know, you had a good experience during London Tech Week. We try and make sure that we're sharing your stories with others. That's how it works, but you can't just turn it on and turn it off. You have to keep working at it.
Well, well, good. And you talk about the, already have some hubs of the GTA in China already? What's the planning? Do you have some strategic planning for that? And what, what want to have the connections with the city of Shanghai?
Yes, I think all of the groups and not just the China groups, the way this community has been built is organically.
Okay.
Somebody puts their hand up and says, I want to set up a group in Shenzhen.
By yourself, okay, all right?
Yes. Or, you know, I want to set up a group in Brazil.
Okay.
And so they then approach me and we talk, and we talk about the licensing agreement. And so if they're the right leaders with the right spirit and the right mentality, we make it happen very quickly. So through Tech China Advocates, we felt Shanghai, we, that was our first group.
Okay.
You know, in 2017. But then as others in China saw what we were doing, and through Senti Group, we did outreach and people were saying, oh, I want to set up a group. So we have six groups. I believe the next group to launch will be Tech Chongqing Advocates. So I was in Chongqing last November. And we had meetings there and we're talking to them. So the more we expose different cities in China to what we're doing, some may be interested, some may not be interested, but if they are interested, we then work with them. But there's no plan beyond other than we want to work with leaders who understand the values and the ethos of our community and see the benefit in joining a global network of tech leaders operating as volunteers.
Yeah, yeah, you, 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 when you were setting up the hubs or the city GTA.
Yes.
What's the criteria to find the right partner? Or, or, or you need some, some needs to set up for that?
Yeah, the, the right, the best partners are people who understand how to build a community. They're usually people who know how to network and communicate very well. They have good connections in their local ecosystem. They also have jobs and so they have time to volunteer to build and create the community. This is a very different model. The whole community is built on volunteers. And we have to be mindful and respectful that people, if they're running a business or they're an investor, they will be, have to step away for a period of time to run their job. So we're trying to make sure that we have people who have the capacity to run these groups. And if a group is not doing well, we'll change the leaders. So I've changed the leaders in Australia. Five, six years ago, we changed the leaders in Singapore. We now have much better leaders. So it doesn't always work. It requires patience. From Shanghai, I'm going to Seoul. We have two new leaders of our Tech Korea Advocates Group. We're doing a big event in a few days' time. And I felt an obligation to go and meet with them because they're doing great work.
Yes.
And to encourage them to keep going.
Yes. You are really the experienced person to promote the technology exchange globally.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, Shanghai now is want to become the scientific global center.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you give, at last, I think the last question is, do you give some suggestions for Shanghai?
On the science?
To construction the global tech innovation center?
Yes, I think, you know, you've got amazing talent here. You've got fantastic research. You have great science parks, you have great universities, you have the foundation of a lot of strength when it comes to the sciences. How you grow that and commercialize that is very important. But I would also say, don't just do it within Shanghai. Look globally, meet people globally, get people from around the world to come here and get talent from here to go to other parts of the world to broaden the view and mindset about what can work. One of the things that I talk about a lot is knowledge transfer.
Yeah.
When I talk about technology transfer, there are three components to it. There is the, the university, the science park, the R and D. There's the investor side of it.
Yes.
But the key driver is the talent.
Talent.
The people, the ideas, the creativity, the innovation. And I truly believe, and whenever I meet somebody from Shanghai, I always say, try and go to other parts of the world and when you come back, have more of a global mindset. Because it's that knowledge transfer that will enrich the ecosystem here. If you, you can do it just from Shanghai and never leave Shanghai. But what I've witnessed in London, in 10 years, London has become a world-leading technology hub. One out of three London tech workers from overseas, they were born overseas. So it's this mixture of overseas talent and homegrown talent. And what's happening is knowledge transfer. We know we don't always have the best people in quantum or chips or robotics. But if we welcome people from other parts of the world, especially to our universities, and part of my message to the UK government is make sure that students from China who want to study in the UK are very welcome to do so. Students from India, from the USA, because that knowledge is so powerful. And then when they go back to their home countries, they're taking something extra with them. And that for me is where I think Shanghai can really cement its position as a world-leading technology hub. Knowledge transfer.
That, that's a good suggestion, yes, knowledge transfer. I, I think, thank you for your time.
My pleasure.
To share a lot of the experience and your perspective about the global innovation centers construction. So I think in the last, maybe allow me use Chinese to the audience.
Of course.
For the ending sentence.
Go for it, yes.
Thank you, Rest, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's really inspirational for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, xiexie.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to be with you.
那我们今天的直播就到此为止，谢谢各位。